... meeting to order at this time.
Thank you.
Let's start with roll call, please.
Councilmember Budiszewski.
Here.
Councilmember Dahl. Councilmember Deschler. Councilmember Cole.
Here.
Councilmember LaRoche.
Here.
Councilmember Parsons. Councilmember, or I'm sorry, Mayor Adams.
Here.
You have a quorum.
All right, thank you. Let's rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
That's not polite.
What?
Barely.
What is that, barely?
So, before we get into the agenda, just a couple comments. I've been gone for a month and I'm happy to be back and I have the opportunity to watch what's been going on with how people watch online. So, it's been nice to see you guys handle everything. It's amazing. Last council meeting, I was predicting what I would do and as you guys went through your process, it was exactly the same vote that I would have had. So, it was really cool to see you guys work through that and all the work that you've gone through. Thank you for filling in, Jeff. Now, I think I'm going to be mayor for a time if all goes well.
Please.
I will do my best to remain in attendance. So, thank you, everyone, for that. At this time, we have an agenda in front of us. I'd like to have a...
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Thanks, Jeff. Looking for a second?
I will second.
Thank you, Nancy. All members in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, say nay.
Any members in flavor?
Flavor, yeah. It's like I'm out of practice.
You're rusty.
Before us, we have a consent agenda. I will read that into the record.
Number three.
There it is. Melody Hanson is here. She is going to discuss some of the occurrences of the diaper drive. She's coming from Robbinsdale area school, so if you're welcome to come forward and... Welcome.
Thank you. Mayor, city council members, city staff, and VUrenadians. It's a pleasure to be here before you tonight and thank you for the opportunity. My name is Melody Hanson. I reside in Crystal at 5624 Nevada Avenue North, but I'm here tonight as the program director for the Robbinsdale Area Redesign Family Service Collaborative and the Helping Us Grow HUG Program. Next week is Diaper Need Awareness Week in the state of Minnesota and also across the nation. So, the governor of Minnesota has proclaimed this as a week where we recognize the fact that one in three families struggle with adequate diaper changes for their children. And so, when you think about that number, one in three, it's more than just the families living in poverty. It's the working poor, it's the grandparents raising grandchildren, it's the students attending school and parenting at the same time. It's a large percentage. And so, the purpose of diaper need awareness is to bring awareness, education, and response. And so, as part of the HUG program, we have been working with the Diaper Bank of Minnesota for the last three years and I want to thank all the residents of Crystal who have donated and helped their neighbor in need. And so, we are currently hosting a drive at the Crystal Community Center now through the middle of October. And I know that some of you have already donated and I've already picked those up and given them to families in need, so thank you for that. We are accepting new packages of diapers and pull-ups, new packages of wipes, and open packages of diapers and pull-ups. So, if you have children or grandchildren who have outgrown those and you have those packages sitting in your closet, you can donate them at the Crystal Community Center and we will pick them up, repurpose them, and give them, or, you know, package them and give them to families in need. Just to give you an idea, last year, our office alone, the HUG office, distributed over, well, it was 101,410 diapers last year. This year, we're going to exceed that. For the city of Crystal, the residents of Crystal, that is five, last year was 5.8% of our distribution, so 5,928. And this year, through July, you've already increased the percentage, the residents of Crystal, to 8.3% of the diapers that we give out. And we're anticipating that it'll continue to be about 10,000 a month that we distribute out of our office. So, the need is great. I would be remiss if I didn't add that if you want to give a financial donation, you can certainly do that. We have a new partner with Huggies that will allow us to purchase a large amount of diapers, so $4,000 amount for minimum, and we can purchase then diapers at 11 cents a diaper versus the normal larger size 23 to 26, so it's less than half the cost. So, I want to thank you for allowing me to share this information. I want to thank the Crystal Community Center for allowing us to host the drive there again this year and also to the residents of Crystal for their generous contributions and their warm hearts to engaging their neighbors less fortunate. And also, if there are any businesses that want to continue this throughout the year, we'd be happy to work with them because the need is so great. And unless there are any other questions, that's all I have. Yes?
I have a question, Melody.
Go ahead.
Have you met with the Crystal Business Association?
I have not.
Go to one of their meetings.
Okay.
Yeah, is it the third Wednesday?
Third Wednesday of the month. This month is... This week, here, in the council. 8:30 on Wednesday.
Okay. So, I am on sabbatical Wednesdays during September taking care of a four-month-old in Crystal. My nieces are my cousin's baby, but I will hit in October, maybe?
Future, yeah.
Okay.
Every month they meet, so I think that'd be a great connection for you.
Thank you. I appreciate that, yeah.
And then, Melody, cash donations, we can send them to you in care of the 2018 diaper drive?
So, yeah, that's a very good question. Thank you. You can make the checks out to the Diaper Bank of Minnesota.
Diaper Bank, okay.
We order through them at the bulk.
And send it to your address at 5624 Nevada?
You could, or my work address, 3730 Toledo Avenue North, Crystal, I mean, sorry, Robbinsdale, 55422.
55422, excellent.
Yeah, so, and then, lastly, if families are in need, if you're viewing this and you are in need, please do not hesitate to contact us. If we have diapers, we will give them to you. It's when we run out of sizes that it takes a little while. Right now, we're pretty good and because we've been doing the drives, but they go really, really fast, you can call me at 763-504-4983 if you need diapers. You can go onto our website at helpingusgrow.org or email me at info@helpingusgrow.org. So, we, again, appreciate this time. I know you have a busy agenda and I really want to thank the residents who have already given and the city council members who have already given. It's heartwarming to see the generosity in this community, so thank you.
All right.
Thank you for all you do.
Thank you, Melody.
You're welcome.
I was very excited to get them out of my house.
Yeah. It was good to know that open bags are allowed.
Yep.
Not what you said last week.
[laughing].
Yeah, I did hear that. All right. So, next is our consent agenda. I will read that into the record at this point in time. We have minutes in front of us for the following meetings. First one is September 4th, regular council meeting and the work session from that same date, and then the work session from September 13th as well. And then, approval of the list of license applications submitted by the city council, or the city clerk to the city council. That list is on file in her office. And then, we have the following donations. $500 from Crystal Frolix Committee for Police Explorers, 300 from Kiwanis Club for Becker Park Project, 300 from T-GK Automotive for Becker Park Project. Thank you for those donations. Approval of a solicitor's license for the window store for two of their employees, home improvements going door-to-door for the month of September 18th to October 17th. They are soliciting for home improvement projects. And then, approval for on-sale liquor license for the Church of St. Raphael's for one of their events on October 13th, 2018. Approval and agreement with Hennepin County regarding the public works mutual aid. Approval of a resolution accepting the community development block grant fund for Becker Park playground equipment and authorizing our city manager to execute the funding agreement. Approval of a resolution ordering the preparation of an assessment rule declaring the amount to be assessed and setting the public hearing for that reassessment for 5203 Angeline Avenue North. Approval of a resolution adopting the Hennepin County All-Hazard Mitigation Program Plan. So, those are the items. Looking for a motion on that? Nancy?
I will make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
All right, thank you. Looking for a second?
I'll second.
Thanks, Jeff. All members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. All right. Is there anyone here for open forum? Anyone here wishing to speak? Seeing nobody approach for open forum, we will skip by that. Next, we have a public hearing. This is to receive comment and consider a resolution for approving the vacation of a platted easement at 5747 and 5751 West Broadway. We will have the conversation with our city planner, Dan Olson. We won't be taking any action on this item, but we will have, we will open the public hearing as well. So, Dan, take it away.
Okay. Good evening. There are two items on your agenda tonight that are closely intertwined. Item 6.1, which you just referred to as the public hearing to vacate easements. The second item is item 7.2, which is approval of a lot consolidation request. So, they're both, I'll just do the presentation now since they're both so related, keep it, make it easy to understand. Just, this is the general location of the site. It's West Broadway. This is the former Thrift Ridge grocery store and this is the Bass Lake Road. And of course, this is West Broadway here, so... On June 5th, the EDA approved the sale of 5751 to FTKD Properties, who owns the adjacent property at 5741 West Broadway. There's a parking lot at 5751 and then there's an office building at 5741, 47 actually, I'm sorry, should be 47 there. One of the conditions of the sale was that FTKD agreed to consolidate the two lots into one parcel so that the existing parking lot and the office building would both be on the same parcel. So, council is being asked tonight to approve the lot consolidation, which is item 7.2, with a plat called the Morgan Taylor Edition. Along with that, this is item 6.1, is the vacating of easements, public hearing to vacate those easements that are existing on the site now, and then new easements would be dedicated on the plat. This is the final plat that consolidates the two lots into one. This is the first, the northern lot right here, and then the southern lot is right here. Just a little bit of information, the lot dimensional information, where the parking lot is at 5751, that's 18,644 in size, and then the other lot is about a little over 15 and a half for a combined total of 34,000 square feet when they're combined. No park dedication fee would be required. That's standard for these lot consolidations. There are three criteria in the Uniform Development Code to approve lot consolidations. First, the first one is that consolidations was being conformed with the comp plan and the finding here is that this has been met. On our comp plan map, these are guided as general commercial and that fits with the existing and proposed use. There is, the use will not change, so I think I forgot to point that out. The second criteria is that the consolidation meets the purpose and intent of our Uniform Development Code and the finding is that it does meet that purpose and intent because the purpose of the UDC is to create regulations to avoid or minimize negative impacts to adjacent properties. And since the use is not, it currently doesn't have any negative impacts and it will not because it's not changing, so... And the third criteria is that the consolidation should create lots that conform to our dimension requirements. Currently, these individual lots do not meet our lot size requirement. They're under 20,000 each, but when they're combined, then they will. So, this is really making it more conforming to our zoning regulations. Then, the vacation of the easements, as I said, there's, these two properties were platted, one in 67 and one in 1970, and at those times, drainage and utility easements were dedicated on those plats at the time. But since we're getting new easements on the new consolidation plat, we no longer need the ones that were dedicated long ago. And so, those new easements are shown on the new plat. I also sent this to the four utility companies just to make sure they're okay with the vacation and they did. They said that they didn't object to it, so... This is in yellow here, this is the, these are the easements that are being vacated, just for your information. And so, staffers recommend approval of the lot consolidation and easement vacation, but as was said earlier, all you're being asked to do tonight now is just to open up the public hearing and take any testimony and then you would table the actual adoption of the resolutions for easement and for lot consolidation until your next meeting. So, I'm available for questions if you have any.
Any questions for Dan from the council? Seeing none. All right. At this point, I'd like to open the public hearing for testimony related to this issue. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on this issue? Seeing nobody approach, we will close the public hearing and as far as the resolution, we will not be taking any action at this time, so we will move on to the next agenda item. Thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
So, first item on the regular agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I wouldn't want you to strain yourself.
Sir?
Would you like somebody else to read the list of...
This is really short.
You can leave it there.
I think I can handle this one. I appreciate it, though.
Just checking.
We have two items on here. Usually, there's a list of approximately 10. Not that feeble. So, let me read that into the record at this time. Health Partners, Inc., payment for September health insurance premiums for $99,509. Para for the employee and city required contributions for payday 9/7/2018 for $52,801. Total disbursements of $25,000 or greater is $152,310.80. Any questions on either of these items? Pretty basic. Very, very basic. All right, looking for a motion. John?
So moved.
Looking for a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. All members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right. Now, 7/2 is written in relationship to the same property, correct?
Correct, but you can take action on the consolidation.
Oh, we can?
Yes.
Excellent. Let's bring up Dan again to talk about the consolidation. Welcome, Dan.
Okay. So, you can't take, that was different from what I understood. This was, I did talk about the consolidation in my presentation here when I was discussing...
We checked it with the state law. Well, actually, Troy did.
Okay.
So, we're good to act on this one.
Okay. So, again, if you have any questions about the lot consolidation, I can answer those.
No question. John?
Just for clarification, I realize that the parking lot, that we have a drainage easement for the parking lot. Is there, we had a discussion about if the building were ever raised, for instance, they would not be able to build on that particular portion of the lot. Is that correct? So, we have access to that drainage?
Yes, the entire lots will have a drainage and utility easement over them, from what I understand.
Quite. Can you go to the map of the project?
Is here?
The zoomed-in version. Yeah, so if you look at the north half of that one, is what's going to have, I think this is lot one. There is, that's what the drainage and utility easement will be over. Eventually, we're going to look at putting in an underground infiltration tank there because it's actually a really convenient place from all the storm sewer feeding the area. But the lot to the south, with the current lot to the south, there's no restriction there other than your normal easements on the side. So, actually, what they could do is redevelop that whole southern area and still keep that northern part for a parking lot, which was kind of our envision because by consolidating them, it actually gave them more space because now that northern lot is included in the calculation for parking spaces.
Very good. Thank you. All right. Any other questions on that? Looking for a motion on this one?
I'll make a motion for resolution approving the Morgan Taylor Edition final plat.
All right, thank you. John?
I second that motion.
Thank you. All members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right, next, the council will consider a resolution awarding a contract for installing of water and sanitary sewer improvements, and we have Mark Ray here to... No, Dan's going to handle that?
Yes.
Dan's going to handle this. Welcome again, Dan.
Thank you. Yes, John Sutter worked on this exclusively, but he's, obviously, in his absence, I'll be doing the presentation. This is just the general site location here. This is, you approved this to be split into three lots here about a month or so ago. These were the surplus park lots. Let me just see here. So, the city is expected to close with Tolberg Homes by the end of October with home construction starting in November for these three lots. And as part of that, before that can happen, the city needs to install sewer and water and other improvements for the lots to be buildable. The scope of work was pretty intensive to do it in-house. It's quite a big project, so we went out for a bid on this with different contractors. We solicited to different quotes, to get different quotes on this from four utility contractors, and we only received one response. That was from Dave Perkins Contracting for the amount of $70,000. The main reason, I think, here is just because it's a very challenging time of the year. These contractors are wrapping up their work. They have a lot of work to do at this time of year. And so, we had, as you see, we only had one response, so they're just really, really busy and there's, some of their other reasons are there's labor's in short supply and the material costs are increasing. So, John wrote in the staff report that his opinion that delaying this work until the spring of '19 would not really guarantee that the cost would be lower and would only delay the sale of the lots until, you know, for another eight months. So, he's recommending that the contract be approved tonight, so... This is just an updated graphic that shows the net proceeds from the sale of these seven lots, seven surplus lots. The new total estimate after this, taking into consideration this cost for this sewer and water installation, is $331,900 net proceeds. So, it's very similar to what was done in March. You can see it kind of fluctuated based on the more knowledge we gained about what was involved in selling these lots. This is more, the most recent number here is the 331. So, we're recommending approval of the resolution to approve the contract with Dave Perkins' contract.
All right. Any questions? Go ahead, John.
Just looking at the bid proposal, that it all adds up to exactly $70,000. Was that, did you actually run the numbers? I mean, that's one question and I have a second question, too.
That's my understanding.
Okay.
Yeah. Maybe they just wanted to make a clean number.
Yeah.
We had some conversations with the contractor because we only received one quote.
Okay. And then, the second thing is traffic control on Veracruz. I mean, there's going to be need for traffic control on Veracruz?
So, if you go back to the plan, Dan, anytime there's work involved in the street, you always put a light item in there for traffic control and sometimes, it's put in there because there is a unit cost for it. Some contractors mark that really low, some contractors use that for some of their profit. But because on the north end there, you see, we actually have to trench across the entire width of the street, plus we have to dig holes to connect the water services, so we're actually going to have to close Veracruz three different times to put that in. So, while I don't expect to be a big item, obviously, there is some needed and because it's their project, they need to be responsible for traffic control.
Okay, so it's not something that we would have, like CSO?
No, it's a liability.
Okay.
Thing.
All right. Thank you. All right.
Just a quick question. Have you worked with Dave Perkins Contracting before?
They have a long history, not only here in the city, but throughout the metro.
Excellent. Thank you.
I think they've done a lot of work for the EDA as well, just doing different sewer and water installations through the years with some of our lots, so...
Nice. Okay, thank you.
All right. Any other questions? John?
I'll make a motion approving the resolution approving plans and specifications for the 2019 sanitary sewer CIPP lining project, 2019-01. Oops.
You're a project ahead.
I am.
I appreciate that.
All right, let me amend that. All right. I make a motion to approve the resolution awarding the contract for Kavanaugh View Sanitary Sewer and Water Service Construction to Dave...
Perk.
Perkins Contracting, Inc. Thank you.
All right.
I'll second.
Thanks, Nancy. All members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. All right. Is this Dan again?
It's not.
There's Mark.
I should note, one of the things I forgot to mention is actually our utilities supervisor worked with Dave Perkins' father to provide some context for how long they've been around.
Oh, wow.
Okay, very good.
So, there's a motion on this item, I guess. Do you have any questions? So, as we've been doing for a number of years, we're looking at doing a sanitary sewer lining project for our sanitary sewer mains next year. The lining method's a method of rehabilitating the existing sanitary sewer main, but there's no digging required unless something goes wrong. It's a little more non-invasive. Residents will be notified by door hanger when the work will impact their service. There's basically one day where they won't be able to use their sanitary sewer service while that the liner's installed there. There's $600,000 budgeted for the project out of the sanitary sewer utility fund. The estimate we came up with is about $530,000. I don't believe there's a contingency in there and that's why there's that $70,000 difference because that's kind of our contingency. The area that we're proposing to be lined has the North Lions neighborhood as well as a portion that extends through Becker Park. That's being done in advance for the Becker Park project, which is why we're here this evening because it'll actually be under where a conceptual splash pad might be. Overall, we're looking to line 3.7 miles of sanitary sewer pipe and 345 feet of storm pipe down in the Brownwood neighborhood. The image up in the right kind of shows the before and after as far as the condition of the pipe and what the liner looks like. To put this all in context, this is a map of the entire sanitary sewer system in the city. The green is what has been lined. The red is the original 1950 pipe that has not been lined. So, this also does include the work being proposed here tonight, so we're getting there. Overall schedule, council consideration tonight, ad for bid, we'll go out tomorrow assuming approval. October is when this will come back. And then, the deadline for completion of the work in Becker Park is January 15th. This work can be done in the winter and that's to be done before the contract is awarded for the Becker Park project. However, substantial completion for the overall project is not until next summer. Our intent with that is to try to give our contractor a very wide window to try to get the best pricing possible. With that, there are two items in front of the council tonight. Motion to approve the plans and specifications and then a motion ordering the ad for bid. With that, are there any questions?
Go ahead, John.
Approximately, how long does the liner last? I mean, what's the lifespan?
So, because they're still new, there's no, you know, exact science, but they're saying 50 years. I mean, it's basically, they're saying it's basically a brand-new pipe going in there because it's plastic is what it ends up being. So, they say 50. We're expecting longer than that.
All right. Anything else? Looking for a motion, John?
I'll run with that. Since I had a little practice. I approve the resolution for the plans and specifications of the 2019 sanitary sewer CIPP lining project from 2019-01.
All right. Looking for a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. All members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries.
There's one more motion needed.
Yep.
I'll run with that, too.
All right.
I approve the resolution ordering the advertisement for bids for the 2019 sanitary sewer C I P P lining project, 2019 dash zero-one.
I'll second that, too.
Nancy, seconds. Thank you. All members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. All right, next, we have our police chief, our police chief Stephanie Revering here to talk about prosecution services, so welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, earlier this year, we solicited prosecute, I can't say this word, this is gonna be fun for you, prosecutorial. There, very good. Services, thanks, Troy, for our request for proposal, and we had several law firms that submitted their requests, and we, after extensive interviews, we decided on the firm Chestnut Cambroon, which you had the privilege of meeting Mark Schneider before this meeting at a work session. The 2019 contract for, is a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, and the 2020 contract is a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. So we're just looking for a motion for approval.
All right. Thank you, chief. Motion?
I'll make a motion, sure, to approve a contract with Chestnut Cambroon, P A, for prosecution services for 2019 to 2020.
All right, thank you. Looking for a second? Jeff, um, John?
I was pointing at John. I was deferring. I was saying, John can do it.
Go ahead. I second that motion.
All members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries.
Thank you.
It's easier for him to just look that way.
Yes.
You're both down that way.
Yeah, there's two over there, there's one over here. All right, next, we have...
Troy, I'm gonna need you to recuse yourself on this one.
He's not voting.
Oh, that's right.
That's right. And Norris is here to talk about, well, attorney services for this job.
I was waiting.
Troy's job.
Thank you, Mayor.
I didn't know if I'd go script or off cuff, but there's a combo.
As you all know, we have a longstanding relationship, good relationship, with Kennedy and Graven for City Attorney Services. So our current contract with Kennedy and Graven and Troy expires at the end of this year, and so Troy and I have worked on another two-year contract, which is in your packet, and I am recommending that we approve it.
All right.
Rates are a modest increase, very modest, in both retainer and hourly.
All right. Any other questions?
I have one other comment. You can't change city attorneys until we get through the city code. I don't. A stipulation right there. Yeah, I don't have that authority.
We're getting close. We're getting there. We're getting there. There's been a lot of, a lot of work. All right.
I would make a motion, I would, if I could take just a second. I just wanna, I wanted to say nice things about Troy, so.
All right, go ahead.
Troy, heck of a job.
Thank you.
I really, I've been, I've worked with Troy quite a bit on some of this code stuff, and I always feel good about the advice that we're giving, that we're getting solid advice. So I will make a motion to approve or authorize the contracts for 2019 and 2020.
Thank you. Looking for a second? Nancy?
I'll second.
Thank you. All members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Unanimously approved.
You're stuck with us for another two years. Well, you're stuck with them, not me.
Thank you.
I'm out.
They can't swap you out yet, can they?
No, no.
No, okay, good. This is specific. Very good. All right, we have some announcements. The Crystal Business Association will be meeting on Wednesday, September nineteenth, at City Crystal Hall in our community room. And we heard from, we heard about the diaper awareness, September twenty-fourth through the twenty-ninth, donations are, can be received at the Crystal Community Center. Kids Garage Sale will be September twenty-ninth, from seven-thirty to eleven A M. At the Crystal Community Center. And the annual Run for Rocco is September twenty-ninth, eight-thirty to ten-thirty, at Bassett Creek Park. That was advertised as a different park. I won't say it, so it doesn't stick in anybody's head, but it is at Bassett Creek Park again. The next council meeting is Tuesday, October second, at seven P M. Here in Crystal City Hall. Special drop-offs day is Saturday, October thirteenth, from eight A M. to three P M. At Brooklyn Park Operations and Maintenance Facility. That is at eighty-three hundred Noble Avenue North. Reminder, Girl Scouts and Boy Scout troops are invited to do the pledge of allegiance here at City Hall during a council meeting. If you're interested, please contact staff, and they'll help you make the arrangements. Reminder to all that the city council meetings and work sessions are open to the public, and current and previous meetings are available for listening or viewing on our website, crystalmn.gov, W W W dot crystalmn.gov. And that's all I have for written announcements. Is there any from the council at this point? Seeing none. John?
Make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
All right, thank you. Looking for a second?
I'll second.
All members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. We are adjourned.